...Village Willmet, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village Willmet. I will call the matters in the order which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along and see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We've adjusted the microphones, but sometimes you have to lean into the microphone so that you can speak clearly, so we can hear you, and also, people in the back of the room can hear you. In addition, everything you say and everything we say is being recorded, and from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and our website at willmet.com. Also, our village board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. If you look up, you can actually see the cameras. The red dot on the camera indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the village board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of village board and other local government meetings on our website at willmet.com. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Willmet who regularly tune into Channel 6 to follow the workings of their local governments. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted at willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contained 1,004 pages. We've had the opportunity to review all that information, so if you do plan to address this tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points that you'd really like us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum tonight. Trustee Plunkett and Trustee Kersman are both attending the Willmet Junior High graduation tonight, because they both have eighth graders, so that's why they're not here. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. I'm going to defer public comment to the end of the meeting tonight, so we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the village board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight that means, starting on page 1 with Item 3.1, the Consent Agenda includes all the items on page 2, all the items on page 3, and about half of the items on page 4 ending with Item 3.32. So items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item's not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Yes, sir. Please approach.
Brendan, my name is Brendan McCarthy, 342 Gregory Avenue. Thank you for having us. We would like to remove Item 3.7 and ask for further clarification.
Okay. Item 3.7's been removed from the Consent Agenda. Is that land use? Yes, it is. Okay. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Item 3.9.
Item 3.9, which is also on the land use report. Any other items? Okay. So, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda noting that Items 3.7 and 3.9 have been removed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you were here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it's been approved, and I will clarify for the people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with the 3 have been approved, and that includes land use items 3.5, 3.6, 3.10, 3.11, 3.12, and 3.13. So if you were here for one of those items, it's just been approved. There will be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda. You are free to leave, as people are obviously doing right now, but you're also more than welcome to stay for the meeting. Now, everybody is leaving. It's early. Please stop by one of our restaurants on your way home, okay? Everybody thinks that's a joke. That's a joke. I'm serious. All right, so we'll move on to Item 4, which is Report of Officers, and the first item is Item 4.1, which is Announcement of the 2018 Winners of the Historic Preservation Awards. And is Kate coming up? Who's presenting? Oh, the Chair of the Commission is here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President and trustees. Thank you for having me. My name's Charles Hutchinson. I'm the Chair of the Willmet Historic Preservation Commission, and as you may know, May was National Historic Preservation Month. The Willmet Historic Preservation Commission capped off this month by giving our annual historic preservation awards on May 31st. We did those awards at the Willmet Historical Museum. It was a fabulous venue. It was a great night. We all had a good time. But before I get into that, I do want to give a shout out to Kate McManus, who is village planner and our liaison, who does a heck of a job in keeping all of us in tow, keeping us in line, and keeping us all organized. So she does a lot of work. Just remember that one. But all year long, you know, leading up to these awards, we accept nominations from homeowners, from neighbors, from architects, from contractors, anybody doing work or seeing work done in the Village of Willmet who thinks that there's significance to what's being done, and we have basically four different categories for nominations. We have stewardship, we have restoration, we have sympathetic condition, and we have streetscape compatibility. Now stewardship acknowledges a home that is basically kept in its original condition from when it was built, using meticulous, just updating and maintenance, using historical materials when necessary and possible, but that's the stewardship award. The restoration award goes for a building that's kind of returned back to its original form. It could be all the building or just part of it. Maybe they added some ornamentation that was missing. Maybe they rebuilt the entire thing, then it burned down, added a porch or a garden or just we went with the original paint job. That would be a restoration award. Sympathetic condition would be a home that had an addition either put on it or on the property, which would be sympathetic to the original structure in scope, material, size, and choice of materials. And then also, streetscape compatibility, that acknowledges exceptional examples of new construction, which you wouldn't think the Historic Preservation does, but we do acknowledge new construction that actually fits into the neighborhood. They take into account what's around them, and they try to make it fit in. So the nominations come to us all year long, like I said, and then I and the other commissioners, who are Melody Glass, Joseph Vito, Michael St. Peter, Bob Furnas, Christine Harmon, and Carmen Corbett, we kind of weed through those and see which ones should be judged for final and which ones shouldn't. And then we hand that off to a panel of judges, which are actually members of Willmet, it's not us, who are either experts in architecture, construction, or experts at Willmet in general, and they will make the final decision. And this year, our judges were John Jacoby, who has done a lot of work this year for the village, Susan Benjamin, and Chris Enick, and they awarded seven awards in those four categories. I'm going to read those as best I can to make sure we don't make any mistakes. So the 2018 winners for Historic Preservation at Willmet, for stewardship, the award went to Catherine and Charles Ryder for the project at 8:30 Central Avenue. And they also awarded stewardship to the Westfield Square Property Owners Association and Barbara Rosenborough of Rosenborough Partners for the Westfield Square Townhomes on Westfield Drive. Restoration award, that went to David and Jacqueline Koch and Creative Craftsman Construction for the project at 1041 Forest Avenue, and another one went to Lisa and Tim Madden and David Knopf of Signal Mountain Craft Works for the project at 1730 Washington Avenue. The sympathetic condition awards, that was awarded to Charles Gladfelter for the project at 1600 Awwood Avenue, and John and Ann Hauser and Shoemaker Design Associates for the project at 518 Greenleaf Avenue. Finally, streetscape compatibility, that award was given to Josh and Natalie Kritzler and David Kritzler and Architect Jad Bloomgarden for the streetscape compatibility for the new home at 1735 Lake Avenue. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Hutchinson?
Thank you very much. I will say, I actually attended the awards, and it was a great night. It was a lot of fun, and as I say oftentimes, it's very difficult to legislate good taste, but we can certainly celebrate it, and that's what the Historic Preservation Commission did that evening. So thank you, and thank you for your service to the village.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4.2, which is Announcement of the Cancellation of the August 14, 2018 Regular Village Board Meeting. I have one more announcement. Next week's, the next regularly scheduled village board meeting, which is June 26th, is going to be rescheduled from a 7:30 start to a 7 o'clock start. Reason being, we've got a very big agenda. The comprehensive annual financial report's being presented that night. We also have the minimum wage vote on the 26th, so the meeting's going to start at 7:00 PM instead of 7:30, and the staff will send out the appropriate notices tomorrow on that. Next up is our report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report's from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move on to Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight. So moving on to our Standing Committee reports, first up is Land Use with Trustee Pierce.
Two items. The first item is Item 3.7, Introduction of Ordinance 2018-048, Providing for the Regulation of an Application for Small Wireless Facilities. This is being referred to Land Use Committee, my understanding is due to state law, but I think Corporate Counsel could probably explain that.
Yeah, I guess I'll ask the resident to come up, and you took it off consent, so why don't you share your question with the board?
Thank you again. Brendan McCarthy with 342 Gregory, and hopefully we followed the right protocol, because we-
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. So there were a few items that we learned about these cell towers that we were hoping the village could take into consideration that we did not see in the material that you provided. Specifically-
Let me interrupt you for one second.
Yeah, no, and I may not be the right guy.
Let's let Corporation Counsel share, this is very much a state law, we have no choice type thing, so maybe he, can he share sort of the context, and then you can ask your question? You've got it already? Okay.
I mean, I've got the question. I can be quick. You know, the items that we were hoping that the board could help us all understand from what we learned at 360 Gregory, with the tower that went up in the middle of the night, is that, you know, we'd like to ask for multiple locations, so the board or the appropriate village members can look at the three locations that a cell provider should be giving you, so that you can help make the most educated guess or decision on where this should go in. We'd like to better understand how Weneka can have a 100-foot radius from a home, but we did not see that in there. Better understand the protections for our kids. This is a school walkway. Eight-year-olds can get up and grab the wires. This is a safety concern for our youth. And better understand who to contact. These are very difficult things for residents. It's a comm ed poll. It's, there's several providers to get to the cell provider, so better understand how to do that. And last, understand the renewal process, which was not in there, and finally, the, just what the village will do to help us protect with the monitoring, the EMFs, the radiation. Go ahead. Yep, thank you.
Go through that. So just a little background on the way of what this ordinance is. It comes as a result of a state law that was in effect 11 days ago. It went into effect, brand-new law, June 1, 2018, and it limits not only every municipality but, or not home rural municipalities, but home rural municipalities as well, like the Village of Willmet. Village has no choice but to follow this law. And without an ordinance that we have here today, the village would waive certain rights that it's given under the state statutes. Those rights essentially are notice of, through a permit application, and fee collection. Very moderate fees, too. They're capped at the state, by the state statute. Now, the permit's important because, to address one of your questions about the safety, the issue of the placement of the facility on the pole can be, and this is, we're talking only about municipal polls, I'll get into comm ed polls in a second, but it can be addressed if it's a safety concern, if it's too low. Also, the structural soundness of the pole. Can it hold what is now going to be attached to it? Will be provided by the carrier, by the applicant who's putting it up. The location issue that you bring up, the three locations, is actually, is prohibited by the state statute. The village can't do anything about that. What it can do is say if, again, that pole is, we want to put a, the wireless carrier wants to put a small cell facility on a pole, we look at the structural soundness of it, and if that's provided in certification, we make sure that there's no interference with the village's telecommunications, basically, essentially it's 911 communications. By state statute, then, we have to allow it to be placed on there, on those poles. And we can't use the fact that we don't want a certain type of pole being used, other than the structural soundness of it. Now, for a comm ed poll, comm ed polls are regulated a little differently. They are regulated by the ICC, and there's an ICC tariff and franchise agreement between wireless carriers for small cells and comm ed polls. The village does not regulate that in any way. And your final question was a question about Weneka. Why does Weneka have a 100-foot buffer? As well as, I believe Evanston did as well. That is no law. That's no longer going to be in effect after, well, as of 11 days ago. It will no longer be in effect by the state statute.
So, Mr. Stein, my understanding, prior to the law, was we were very limited in what we could do, and I know our councils of government have been following this law for quite a while and very unhappy with it, because we're now even further limited. I mean, basically-
Correct.
-there's next to nothing we can do when a small cell installation is requested.
So our limitations were on comm ed polls. If it was going to be placed on a comm ed poll, we were already, municipalities were already limited based upon federal communication rules and ICC rules. We had a little bit more leeway about putting it on a municipal poll, something that we had in our right of way, the village-owned or village-operated municipal poll, and that has been stripped away from us by the state statute. The Illinois Municipal League and the Northwest Municipal Conference have worked, as well as other conferences, have worked diligently over the last year, 18 months, trying to fight this bill. I was part of that as well, and we were unsuccessful. So.
My understanding is the reason this is going to land use, to discuss it, is to, you know, have a dialogue of how we're going to implement this, is that, I mean-
There's two reasons why it's going to land use.
Yeah.
So the first reason is, of course, to discuss what the regulations are. The regulations in this draft ordinance are the maximum allowed. Perhaps somebody on land use feels that we shouldn't have the maximum allowed, but obviously, I threw everything in there that we can, and then we can discuss that. The second issue is that there are zoning amendments. So the Land Use Committee is acting as a special zoning commission, or as a special zoning committee. By state statute, we have to have a public hearing, and that is why land use will act as the agent, or the commission that has the public hearing on that. Because we are changing certain things to a permitted use by law, we have to do that. So it's kind of the process to do that.
So if you, I mean, certainly if you'd like to attend the Land Use Committee, all of our committee meetings are public meetings that are noticed as well, and if you give Mr. Stein your email address, he will let you know.
Mr. McCarthy, I have it, and I will email you tomorrow as well as some other information and copies of this.
Would you like me to put that back?
No, no, we'll take care of it. We'll take care of it.
We have to make this, all of this finalized by July 24th?
Yes.
By July 24th, yes. So we have 60 days-
Bring this back to the board on July 24th?
Yes, that's correct.
That's the deadline put in the state statute.
Right, 60 days after June 1st, and we don't have another meeting.
Do we have the Land Use Committee scheduled?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I'll take care of it.
When is the meeting?
It's, I just looked, it's July 10th at us, right before the next village-
Before the Village Board.
Before the July 10th Village Board meeting.
6 o'clock on July 10th.
There you go.
And it'll all be posted. We'll make sure it's all out, and I'll make sure that you get a copy of everything as well.
Okay, so Item 3.7 was just an introduction, so there's no vote or anything else to do here. I'm going to step in front of Trustee Pierce on Item 3.9, because it was Trustee Pierce that requested that 3.9 be removed from the Consent Agenda. So Trustee Sullivan, would you make the motion instead of Trustee Pierce on Item 3.9?
So regarding, Item 3.9, I make a motion to approve Zoning Board of Appeals Case Number 2018Z18 at 34 Canterbury Court regarding a revised request for a 1-foot fence height variation to permit the replacement of a 7.5-foot tall, solid fence in a side yard and a rear yard in accordance with the plans as revised.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Trustee Pierce, you asked for this to be removed?
Yes, I asked for this to be removed, because the owner of the property and I are partners at work, and therefore, it's appropriate for me to recuse myself, and I couldn't do that if it was left on the Consent Agenda.
Okay, so we still have four members that can vote, so that's okay. Is there any further discussion on this matter? This did have a positive recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, so Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries, the request is approved.
Well, we should have- Trustee Pierce is abstaining.
I abstain.
So Trustee Pierce abstained for the record.
Due to conflict.
Okay, so now I will hand it back to Trustee Pierce.
That concludes land use, right? Yes, it does.
Item 611.
611.
But doesn't it conclude land use?
Trustee Pierce is a little rusty.
Okay, yes, that's right, because this is being continued.
Right.
Okay, so I move that we remove from the table Item 611, which is Case Number 2018Z14, 1200 Cleveland.
Okay, so first we'll remove it from the table, and then we'll have a motion. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of removing it from the table say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, so it's removed from the table, and now I'll entertain the motion to approve.
I think there's a motion to put it back on.
Oh, wait, are we tabling it? I'm sorry, was that in the-
It's being continued.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, I missed that.
So the motion, the proper motion, we put it back onto the table. A specific date.
August 28th.
August 28th, okay. I'm sorry. So, Trustee Pierce, would you restate the motion for me?
You're sure about that?
I think so. So we're going to table this till August 28th?
That's correct.
Okay, I thought it was a little odd, given the light board that we were going to go forward tonight.
So August 28th is the new date?
The proper motion, we motion to table Item 6.111 to August 28th.
Okay, I move, we table Item 6.111 to August 28th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so the item is tabled to August 28th. Thank you. My mistake there.
That concludes land use.
That concludes land use. Okay, so now we move on to the Finance Committee report, which is Trustee Sullivan.
We have two items tonight. First item is Item 6.21, which is the Introduction of Ordinance 2018-045, repealing ordinance 2017-036, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding minimum hourly wage.
Okay, so Item 6.21 has been introduced. Introduce the second one, and then we'll go through.
And then the second item is 6.22, Introduction of Ordinance 2018-046, repealing ordinance 2017-040, identifying home rule conflicts with a certain county ordinance regarding paid sick leave.
Okay, so Item 6.22 has been introduced. So normally, that would be the end of the agenda item. Normally, actually, that would be on the Consent Agenda as well. How our last June, when we considered the opt-out ordinances, there was quite a bit of confusion around the board's normal operating procedures for considering and approving ordinances. So I'm going to take this time to walk through the process we've undertaken to date, talk about the process for tonight's meeting, and also talk about the meeting two weeks from now. So first off, and the staff thought that PowerPoint would be helpful, so let's see if I can get this to work. I can, okay. Just backing up and looking at the timeline, on June 13th of last year, the ordinances opting out of the county laws were introduced, just like they're being introduced tonight. On June 27th, the votes were taken, and the ordinances opting out were approved. At that meeting, the agreement was that we would continue to study the ordinances and the issue, and potentially reconsider them, which is where we are now. But the Finance Committee took that up in November after the budget process had concluded, and on December 12th, a working group of residents and business owners was appointed by this board, and that group was chaired by John Jacoby. His name's come up twice tonight, so he's been a busy guy. The working group held seven public meetings between January and April, and then on May 15th, as many of you know, because you were here, the village board received that report in a committee of the whole meeting, and tonight is June 12th, and the ordinances repealing the village's opt-out have been introduced, and as I said, there will be a formal vote on those ordinances on the meeting on June 26th. And again, I'll just remind everybody, I'll probably say this 10 times, that that meeting will start at 7:00 PM, not the usual 7:30 PM. So tonight's meeting, the ordinances are being introduced. When we introduce an ordinance, we don't discuss it, we don't debate it, and we certainly don't vote on it. Introducing an ordinance is part of our normal procedures, and the purpose is that by introducing an ordinance at the meeting prior to it being adopted, or voted on to be adopted, we give notice to the board, we give notice to the community and others of interest that the proposed law will be considered at the next meeting. So normally, this is a very procedural thing, and you just move on, and actually, there's probably ordinances on, do we have any introductions on here?
I think we have one.
The one we just talked about.
Yeah, right, the small cell one, for example, is an introduction. And on Item 3.4, last meeting, we introduced that ordinance, and we adopted it at this With regards to public comment, we will hear public comment tonight. We will follow our normal rules, and depending on how many people wish to make comment tonight, I may go through them at length. But it's important that everybody will also have the opportunity to speak at the June 26th meeting prior to our vote. So if you're not able to attend the meeting on June 26th, you certainly have the opportunity to address the board this evening if you'd like. I would request that if you are planning to attend on the 26th, and you are planning to address the board on the 26th, that you hold your comments until that meeting. Just, again, we will not be voting, we will not be discussing. When public comment is over, we're moving on to the next item. So, again, the third bullet on this slide, if you commented publicly at the May 15th meeting, or if you sent an email to the board, your comments are on the record. Even if your email came in later, all of those things are in the public record. Again, you're welcome to speak again, but you don't need to do that. And again, as a reminder, we ask that everybody be respectful. If a lot of people do want to comment, I will go through my entire litany of how we do public comment. So what I will also do tonight, because I want to be consistent here, I will allow people to register their support for, or their opposition to, opting out of the county's ordinance without having to take the time to address the board. I'm going to ask people to raise their hands to show their support or their opposition, and we will count each group included in the record, and of course, participation in this exercise is optional. Now, I have heard from a number of parties that there are some concerns about the hand-raising process. The concern that's being registered is that you don't know who the person is who raises their hand, whereas during public comment, people typically identify themselves during During the hand-raising, people do not. So, in response to that, I'll make just a couple of comments. First of all, the Village Board is aware of that fact. Second of all, the reason this process, I use this process for meetings with a lot of people who may want to address the board, is to make the meeting move more efficiently. By allowing someone to register their opinion without taking three minutes to come speak to us, we save a lot of time, and that makes everybody get out of here earlier. And also, for the people who really do want to speak, you have the opportunity to speak, and you don't have to wait as long to speak. The third thing I'll note is that tonight, as I said, we're not voting on the ordinances. And the staff has been broadly communicating that fact, so I suspect it's a much lighter crowd here tonight than on May 15th, and I suspect there'll be a much, many more people here on May 26th. So, there are many people who I suspect have not chosen to attend the meeting. And then finally, we have looked at an enormous amount of information on this issue, and the number of people in attendance who raised their hand is one more piece of information, but that information is appropriately weighted by each member. So, hopefully, I've addressed some of the concerns. Again, this is really for efficiency and for moving the meeting along. So, again, people can register their support. When I ask for people to do that, please listen carefully, because we are using the term "opt-out," which can be confusing. So, if you'd like to express your support for the village opting out of the county's ordinances, that is, not having them take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. Okay. So, we've got at least four people that counted 20. Okay. Now, if you'd like to express your opposition to the village opting out of the county's ordinance, that is, you'd like them to take effect in the village, please raise your hand now. Okay. So, it's either 34 or 35. Okay. So, again, we're not going to be voting or discussing the ordinance tonight. When public's comment is over, we're going to move on. So, if you are planning to, again, attend on the 26th, I ask that you hold your comments. If you're not going to be there on the 26th, and you'd like to address this, I'd invite you to do so now. May I see a show of hands of people who would like to address the board tonight? Wow. It's going to be a light meeting on the 26th, isn't it? 12 on this side. 14 on that side. Okay. So, we've crossed the threshold of the number of people, and so now you're going to hear my whole spiel on public comment. So, let me remind everyone of the village's rules for public comment during a Village Board meeting. In order to give every person a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person will be allowed three minutes to speak, and individuals will be allowed to address the board only once. I ask that all speakers be considerate of each other this evening. Please be respectful of each other's opinions, and refrain from commenting during the hearing unless it's your turn at the podium. Please refrain from applauding, booing, or otherwise making comments or noise, and please address your comments to the board and not to others in the room. As a matter of courtesy to those who are waiting patiently to address the board, please be concise and try to avoid reputation in your comments. If another speaker has already said what you plan to say, you may just say that you agree with that speaker's comments to save time. If you can use less than three minutes, that, of course, would be appreciated. And Mr. Frenzer will be responsible for watching the time for each speaker. He will raise one finger when you have one minute left. He will raise his hand when there are 30 seconds left, and he will also let speakers know when their time is up. Again, please be considerate of other speakers who wish to be heard and conclude your remarks on time. There were 36 people who indicated they would want to speak. That's more than an hour and a half if everyone takes their three minutes. So, raise the hands on this side again. Okay. So, everybody sitting in the yellow seats on this side, please step forward to the podium. We'll get the back, we'll do the back half of the room next, just so people don't have to wait too long in line. Okay. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Betsy Hart. I live on Woodbine Avenue in Wilmette. And I would like to state for the record that I am, while I understand the chairman's desire to take a hand vote, I do have concerns that citizens would be asked to vote on another person's private property. And I am guessing that if that same protocol were followed for, let's say, a certain doctor who's been a big advocate of these ordinances, and we were to say in her practice, "You must hire these kinds of people," or "This age of people," or "This demographic group," she would say, "But no, this is my business. I know how to run it. You have no right to do that. You're not invested in my business." She would be right, and I would agree that we do not get to vote to take away other people's property, or to decide to run other people's businesses any more than we would want them to do that to us. Second, I do want to share a text that was sent around widely throughout Wilmette yesterday, or actually, Sunday evening. This is by a leader of the position to please opt in. And he writes this. Hi, blank name redacted. This is Jeff Axelrod from Wilmette. I wanted to make sure everyone knows we're the only town along the North Shore that lowered the minimum wage for adults from $10 to $8.25, going against almost three-quarters of us voters. Please consider signing the petition and come, if you can, to Tuesday night's meeting at Village Hall. I don't think I have to tell the board that you did not vote to lower the minimum wage. This is an absolute falsehood. I would like to ask, if in fact, the case for opting in is so strong, why does the leader of making that case resort consistently and exclusively to falsehoods to promote his position, instead of sticking with the truth and the merits? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Liz Bennett. I live on Brookside Drive. I'm a 31-year resident of Wilmette. I have a background in economics, and a CPA and MBA, and I'd like to believe that the free market would take care of fair wages. I'd also like to believe that the charity of individuals and some government safety nets would take care of gaps. However, in the real world we live in, we need to opt in to the ordinance as a small start in helping people earn a living wage in a dignified and just manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm Judy Mandl. I live at 141 Green Bay Road. I've lived in Wilmette for over 20 years. The first time I lived in Wilmette was in 1945 I came here. So, I'm recoming into Wilmette. And I'm reading, I have already sent an email to the board, so I'm reading a letter from another Wilmette resident named Paul Trainer, Hay Moon Media at 1600 Central. Dear Wilmette trustees, I would like to add my voice to the majority of Wilmette citizens by encouraging you to vote to opt in to the county minimum wage and sick leave ordinance. My understanding is that a survey of residents showed that two-thirds of us are in favor of joining our neighboring communities in moving forward to a living wage for those people who watch our children, serve our meals, and service our community in myriad ways. As a small business owner, a homeowner, and a Wilmette taxpayer for more than 15 years, I understand that there's a premium that must be paid to live in our beloved community. Great schools, great parks, and great services are obviously worth the additional taxes that everyone who ever purchased a home in Wilmette knows is simply part of the equation. It seems only fair that we are willing to enable those who travel to work here every day to keep up, or at least stay a bit more in line with the cost of living. While I firmly believe that every Wilmette resident has an equal right to express their views, there continues to be an inordinate pressure placed on our local institutions by a very small group of residents who happen to make their livings by taking uniformly anti-government positions on every issue. Although it seems a clear violation of ethics to argue for positions that benefit them professionally without disclosing their vested interests and associations, to my knowledge, none of them have done so to date, despite their organized efforts to influence the board. As our volunteer trustees, I know that each of you has been called to serve the interests of the community we all share, and I do not doubt your integrity in the slightest. But while I'm respectful of your personal opinions and truly appreciative of your time, I would merely encourage you to remember that in a representative democracy, the highest concern of any elected body is that it reflects the will of the majority of its citizens. Some may argue that we don't have a collective obligation to each other...
30 seconds.
...and that insisting upon fair and human working conditions would somewhat taint their idyllic view of the free-market society. My own experience of Wilmette tells me that very few of us, if any, believe that we are not part of a cherished but unspoken social contract. It is our privilege to live in this community and to have conscientious neighbors like you who are willing to serve the collective interests of the village. I encourage you to extend that service to the protecting of the interests of those who are such a vibrant part of village life...
Time's expired.
...even if they don't mean... Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Price. I live at 2002 Beechwood Avenue in Wilmette, a 44-year resident. I'm going to read a letter from a business owner, a Wilmette business owner dated June 12th, 2018. Dear Wilmette trustees, my name is Jan Ehrenberg, and I own parties, events, and more. I am a small business owner and Wilmette resident. I have been in business and lived here in Wilmette for 30-plus years. I am writing today because I support opt-in. I support raising minimum wage and giving paid sick leave. I employ six different people over the course of a year and do it with grace and passion. I am upset and disgusted that a few noisy business owners are making all business owners in our community look bad. I feel cornered and pushed around by this process. Business owners I know in Wilmette, including myself, support opt-in. We are ready and willing to raise wages and offer paid sick leave. We support businesses and workers. We love being a Wilmette business owner, and this embarrassing scene is disappointing. As a member of this community and business owner, I urge you to do what is right for business, workers, and public health by opting in. We must opt in. Do not be fooled by these poorly-administered polls that not one business owner I know received. The Wilmette chamber is not the voice of most business owners in this community. Their voice is not my voice. I am embarrassed by their actions because many business owners like me truly support this community and believe in this ordinance. I am happy to support the ordinance, and as a longtime resident and business owner, I hope you will join me in supporting our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome. Thank you.
I'm Barry Bennett, like one of the other lovely and very well-spoken speakers. I'm a 31-year resident. I live on Brookside Drive. There's been a lot, there was a lot of talk at particular last meeting. What was the real wish of the business community? How many were on one side? Was it a scientific poll? We know that the poll that the group took of the community residents was a scientific poll. It may not have been perfect, but it was designed by professionals to get that, and we know what the results were, which is overwhelming support among the residents. As far as the business community, there's been a lot of debate and uncertainty. Where do they stand? Who stands where? And you're hearing some letters tonight from some of them. But it's not just about the business community. We citizens are allowed to set community standards and allowed to say, "We love you, businesses. We shop with you. We help support you." But we're going to say, "If you want to do business in our community, you're going to have to have certain standards that conform to the wishes of the community as a whole." And if your only, if your model now relies on paying poverty-level wages, then you have to change your model. And by poverty-level wages, what I mean is wages that if somebody works full-time, 40 hours a week, they're still below the poverty line. And that's what the minimum wage that we're asking you to raise is, sets people at. It's a poverty wage because it means if you work full-time, you're below the poverty level. And we're entitled to say, as a community, we don't want that. You just have to do better if you're going to be part of our community. There are a variety of ways that communities control what individuals do, what property owners do, what businesses do, and this is just something the community has said...
One minute.
...we want. Thank you. Now, there's also been talk, "Let's do it at the state level." That'd be nice. "Let's do it at the national level." That'd be nicer. But the national level hasn't done it. The state level hasn't done it. I live in Wilmette. Yes, I live in Illinois, too. I live in the United States, too. But we're talking about Wilmette. Your position, ladies and gentlemen, is in Wilmette, and you have the power and the authority to do it in Wilmette. Whatever the rest of the state's doing, whatever the rest of the country's doing...
30 seconds.
...you have the ability to bring these people a little bit out of poverty. Now, you're entitled to be proud of the fact that you devote yourself to community service. But think about, think about what you're really proud of. Think what's going to make you proud. Are you never really going to be proud, "I stood firm to keep people living at poverty wages because that's what I felt would help business?" You may someday be very proud, if you think about it, that you did your little bit here in Wilmette...
Time's expired.
...to raise people out of poverty. Accept the opportunity to be proud of that someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Peter Sung Ohr. Last name is O-H-R. I am a resident of Wilmette on 9th Street. I support opting in. However, I will reserve my statement until next board meeting. I would like to read a letter from a Wilmette business owner, Jenny Shade. The business is JRS Consulting, located at 1316 Gregory Avenue. It's dated June 12, 2018. Dear Wilmette trustees, my name is Jenny Shade, and I own JRS Consulting. I am a small business owner and Wilmette resident. I have been in business and lived in Wilmette for 19 years. I am writing today because I support implementing a minimum wage in our village. Paying Wilmette employees a minimum wage will enable them to better care for themselves and their families. In addition, a wage, a minimum wage can improve the recruitment and retention of good employees who are important to the success of Wilmette, businesses, and our local economy. As a member of this community and business owner, I urge you to do what is right for business, workers, and public health by opting in. I support the ordinance, and as a longtime resident and business owner, I hope you join me in supporting our community. We must opt in. Thank you. Signed, Jenny Shade. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Matt Quinn. I live in Chicago. I am the Government Relations and Communications Manager at the Illinois Restaurant Association. The IRA represents the largest private sector employer in the state of Illinois, with over 577,000 people employed in the hospitality industry, generating over $26 billion in annual sales. Let me just start by saying that the IRA supports a reasonable increase to the minimum wage at the state level. We've worked over the past few years on a bill in Springfield that calls for a gradual increase to $11 for the entire state over a number of years. We believe that labor standards should be set at the state level with preemption, so we don't have an endless patchwork of local jurisdictions passing their own labor regulations. I'm here to respectfully ask that the board vote against opting in to Cook County's $13 entry-level wage and paid sick leave laws. More than 80% of municipalities in Cook County, Wilmette included, have taken action to opt out of these laws, and for good reason. These municipalities have voted to prohibit a drastic increase in labor costs on small businesses due to a higher minimum wage and paid sick leave mandate. They didn't want to put themselves at a 58% labor cost disadvantage with surrounding communities in Cook and Lake County. If Wilmette votes to opt in to these Cook County ordinances, it will almost certainly lead to fewer jobs, reduced hours, and increased cost of doing business, and a decline in employers locating, expanding, or staying in Wilmette. A minimum wage increase and paid sick leave mandate can't be looked at in isolation. The hospitality industry of Cook County is facing a seemingly endless blizzard of increased taxes and regulations. We've got some of the highest sales tax in the country, one of the highest hotel taxes in the country, high real estate and property taxes, intense labor shortages, and much, many more challenges. As the average restaurant operates on profit margins of about 3% to 5%, all of this adds up very quickly.
You have one minute.
Wilmette businesses don't operate on an island, and anytime a restaurant faces a massive increase in labor costs, they need to, you know, reevaluate their workforce and operations. In the hospitality industry, there's really only two things that you can control, food costs and payroll. And with these labor mandates, you're putting restaurateurs in no-one situations where basically they need to do more with less, or pass increased costs on to their valued customers. In the restaurant industry, we provide more opportunity...
30 seconds.
...flexibility, and potential for advancement than any other industry. You know, I think we're anchors of the community that strive to provide the very best wages and benefits possible to our employees. So, we believe that this is a decisive opportunity to vote to protect small businesses in Wilmette and help grow the local hospitality community. So, I thank you for your consideration. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm John Marshall. I live at eight-twenty-two Prairie Avenue in Willmet. Supporters of the higher minimum wage and paid sick leave have been described as a small group of loud activists, but that's not the reality. We are residents and business owners, customers and workers, teachers, retirees, clergy, doctors, and many other lines of work. We are the over seventy-five-hundred people, voters, who supported the higher minimum wage when it came to referendum and the nearly ten thousand who supported paid sick leave when it was up for referendum in Willmet. We are the two-thirds of respondents to the village's commissioned phone survey who supported higher minimum wage and paid sick leave. We're the hundreds of people who've written letters and come to public meetings and raised our hands. We're also the people who have signed petitions collected at the farmer's market and in front of the library and all over Willmet, as well as online. About six hundred people who signed it in person, about two hundred people who've signed it online. We are many people. We are devoted to Willmet and we will continue to insist that people who work full-time in Willmet should not need to come to work when sick and should be able to take care of their families if there is an illness and that they should not have to live in poverty when they are working full-time. I'd now like to present the petitions that we've collected to the board. Maybe someone in the village manager's office would like to take them and keep them for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Okay. So we'll, we'll, in the back row there, in the, in the blue chairs on the left, how many people would like to speak? Okay. Want all five of you come up now?
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Allison Hout. I live at five-twenty-three Maple Avenue and tonight I'm speaking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Willmet. I'd just like to say that we appreciate that the village president is making sure that there is no comment fatigue in the community and that you're trying to keep the meeting efficient. And we also are very appreciative that Willmet does provide the opportunity to hear the voices of the public in Willmet. The League of Women Voters of the United States, which has close to nine hundred local member leagues in our fifty states, adopts and follows policies that are developed via a deliberate and formal research process. The League of Women Voters, United States, has a policy position on meeting basic human needs. That's defined as food, shelter, and access to health care and transportation. That policy supports programs and policies to prevent or reduce poverty and to promote self-sufficiency for individuals and families. The Cook County ordinances are exactly that. Policy to prevent or reduce poverty and to promote self-sufficiency for individuals and families. As we all well know, currently in Illinois, our minimum wage of eight-twenty-five an hour does not reach that standard of meeting basic human needs. If a person works full-time for eight dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, they cannot earn enough money for food, shelter, access to health care, and transportation for one person in our Chicagoland area. In an area where cost of living varies widely, it is entirely appropriate and welcome for a community or municipality or county to enact locally-specific wage standards in order to match area cost of living. We have heard people address the board with concerns about the dire consequences and the downsides of these ordinances. The Village Board Working Group looked into all of these concerns.
You have one minute.
And the research found that the concerns are not warranted, period. Recently, the Village Board tasked the Environmental and Energy Commission with answering questions about coal tar. These responses clarified the appropriate direction to take and the Village Board acted accordingly. This is the standard by which our community should be judged. We value education, information, and data. Our village government makes important decisions every day. These decisions are based upon sound process, formulation of questions to be answered, assembly of data to address the questions, and analysis of that data. The research is in. The Village Board, staff, and residents invested thought, time, and money. Now is the time to make the decision to which all of the work clearly points. Be the leaders Willmet elected you to be. Have courage in your leadership. Opt in to do what is best for all of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hout.
My name is Ann Treadway Aroca. Did I move that? So sorry, I touched your screen. I didn't mean to. I don't know how to go back.
I got it.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Try not to do that. The last name is spelled A-R-O-U-C-A. I live at nine-three-five Elmwood. I've been a resident since nineteen ninety-nine. I attended several of the meetings of the working group and reviewed much of the material gathered, and I commend the working group and village staff for their diligence and effort. The final report amasses a substantial amount of data that should help the trustees in making a decision. I also add my voice to those who support application of the Cook County ordinances. There's the button. And I believe the majority of the evidence gathered by the working group supports that as well. I will not be here, I don't expect to be able to be here on June twenty-sixth, so I wanted to speak today. I don't want to repeat the comments of others, though I agree with them, but I want to comment on the legal opinions that were included in the board packet for the last meeting for May fifteenth. As a retired attorney, I was curious about the home rule provision and reviewed the Bernardi case cited in the Corporation Counsel's opinion and in the opinions of the state's attorneys, as well as other materials, including other cases and the minimum wage law itself. I also sought and received suggestions from other attorneys on certain issues. So the preparation of a thoughtful letter, I hope it's thoughtful, took more time than I expected and I hope to get it to you within the next couple of days. But what I wanted to say is that I already believe, based on research, that there is a good case in favor of the ordinances as passed by Cook County. While the Bernardi case refers to minimum wage law in dicta, it is now thirty years old and many cases have approached the powers of home rule entities more expansively.
You have one minute.
In fact, I think that it is far more likely that a court would look at the state minimum wage law as a floor, not a ceiling. The minimum wage law itself provided that any existing minimum wage that was higher than the state law would not be affected by the enactment of the state minimum. So it seems that the legislature did not want to enforce a single wage level or maximum, but a minimum level. The sick leave ordinance also fits well within the home rule power over public health.
Thirty seconds.
And nothing in the state law itself suggests the state has preempted it. Thank you for your attention. You should be receiving a more substantial letter shortly. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Ann Sullivan and I live at five-ten Lake Avenue. Although tonight my comments are in favor of enacting the Cook County minimum wage ordinance, I also support opting in to earn sick time. Over the past year, I've had the opportunity to talk about the ordinances with a number of my friends and neighbors. Most of the people I've talked to believe that the current Illinois minimum wage of eight dollars and twenty-five cents per hour is too low. However, some feel that it is not up to Cook County to establish a minimum wage and believe the minimum wage should be set by the state, as the Restaurant Association gentleman said earlier tonight. From the perspective of someone who grew up downstate, I have experienced firsthand that minimum wage in a state like Illinois cannot be one-size-fits-all. In Springfield, where I grew up, the median home price is half that of Chicago and one sixth of what it is in Willmet. The average one-bedroom apartment in Springfield rents for five-ninety-nine a month versus nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine in Chicago and one-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy in Willmet. Everything from groceries to utilities to transportation, to the gas it takes to drive four hours down I-55 are less expensive. Overall, the cost of living is more than thirty-three percent less than Chicago. And yet, a full-time hourly worker in Springfield earns the same seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-dollar annual salary as a minimum wage worker in Willmet. The ability to afford basic food, shelter, and health care is known as the living wage and in Cook County, it is thirteen dollars and thirty cents an hour. By enacting an ordinance that raises minimum wage to thirteen dollars, Cook County is giving citizens who earn minimum wage the opportunity to afford basic necessities based on the cost to live in the Chicago area, not anywhere else in Illinois. The second argument in favor of county legislation relates to our troubled government here in Illinois. Our legislators have been unsuccessful in raising minimum wage for eight years under both Democratic and Republican governors. Last summer, shortly after Willmet's opt-out vote, the Illinois Legislature sent a bill to the governor to raise the minimum wage. The bill was vetoed in part because lobbyists asserted it was unfair to downstate businesses that could not afford to pay employees fifteen dollars an hour. With the track record of gridlock in our state government, the likelihood of agreeing on a minimum wage law that is fair for everyone seems like a pipe dream. Meanwhile, the county ordinance provides our community with an opportunity to pay our local workers not what is fair for the state, but what is fair for them. I hope the Village Board will vote to repeal the opt-out and act in the interest of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
I'm David Van Brekel, resident nine-eighteen Cornell Street here in Willmet. Coming up on my fifth year as a resident, some weeks struggling because I'm, I'm a poor pastor in the area as well. That being said, last year, when the ordinance came forward, it really, for my wife and I, it became a conversation piece around how much we cared about this community and how much we wanted to support this community, which meant we did, we were much more intentional about shopping more in the community, visiting places here. It meant date nights actually happened and it happened in Willmet. It means that my two kids are, two of the kids that terrorize some of the restaurants on occasion here. That being said, too, I, I, being a pastor, I've heard stories from different families and people in our Chicagoland area who, who struggle to make ends meet with the current minimum wage. And so I was glad when the survey came back and showed that there is two-thirds support throughout the village. And for me, at least personally, even as a poor pastor, I, I'm willing to, to spend a little bit more to make sure that, to make sure that we have better communities around us because I think that makes for a better community ourselves, too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Rabbi Andy Basov. I live at twelve-hundred North Branch Road. I previously served as a congregational rabbi for twenty-four years and now am a freelance rabbi and pianist. My parents, my older brothers, and I moved here fifty-one years ago this month, and my younger brother joined us later in that summer. I grew up here through high school. I went to college locally. Then I moved away to be an adult. I love Willmet. I chose to move back here two and a half years ago when I became single again in order to spend time with and assist my ailing and ultimately passing Korean War Vet father. I live now with my eighty-eight-year-old mother, catty-corner from Loyola Academy. Our dining room window offers a magnificent view of Loyola's two fields on the west side of Laramie Avenue, which, which after all these years may have become parking lots were it not for a thoughtfully reconsidered process of community outreach and interaction, along with a more extensive planning process overall. I approach Loyola about considering different options even before the Green Space Initiative began. I was thrilled to see how Father McGrath and other staff members and consultants and this board of trustees worked cooperatively to overcome obstacles to Loyola's development while sensitively addressing the community's concerns. So I offer this background because I find many similarities with this situation in that there are pros and cons to opting in or staying, opting out. And I think that the community effort.
You have one minute.
To show its support for one and the other is very positive, but I think by my finally deciding to wear this paper button lets you know where I stand. So I come tonight to speak about some biblical perspectives that affect my wanting to see the village opt in to these ordinances. Throughout the Hebrew Bible.
You have thirty seconds.
We are reminded about helping the widow, the orphan, and the stranger in our midst. I suppose Judaism has always been in favor of helping the underdog. And there are two other things that enter into this, that, one, there's a teaching that if somebody offers their cloak for a pledge for a loan that they owe, a debt that they owe, that pledge has to be given back to them at night so they can stay warm.
Time's expired.
And secondly, that even on the Sabbath, we must take care of our feed, our animals, and other people that are in our employ. So I hope that in this case, we can continue to work to provide for the most vulnerable in our community, as has been expressed, and that the village will decide to opt in. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Alexandra Edenberg. I live at five-oh-four Illinois Road. I am a small business owner and mom of four kiddos and I proudly call Willmet home. I'm a fifth-generation small business owner. I know what it's like to some days have weenies and whites, the next day have steak asparagus and new shoes. It is a very bumpy roller coaster ride. I am here because I support the opt-in and I know that many business owners in our community do. I have felt very bullied and disheartened by what is going on. I think the vast majority of small business owners do truly support this opt-in. I, you know, I feel like there's been a lot of numbers that have been thrown around. If I understand correctly, the chamber said ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent of people are already paying these wages already. As a small business owner, I became a small business owner because I wanted to challenge myself and I encourage us to challenge that one or two percent that's not there yet. I became a small business owner because of my work ethic and my ability to work hard and I wanted to create employment for myself, but also others. And as a small business owner, I take my savvy in order to look at business growth and be able to afford those people. I've spoken to a lot of business owners and not everyone feels comfortable coming forward and saying they support the opt-in because there's a lot of business owners saying that they don't and those seem to be like the loud ones, but then it's us, ones that really do want to do this ordinance, that seem to be silenced right now. So I will share with you a list that has felt comfortable, some of which have written a letter, some have been submitted, some I've brought today. Jenny Shade, who's been a Willmet resident for seventeen years and has had her business here in Willmet for fifteen, JRS Consulting. Nancy Zitlin, who's lived here over twenty years. She owns Nancy Zitlin Holistic Health. Paul Trainer, who owns Hay Moon Media. He's also lived here for close to fifteen years. Tate Medina, who owns Odo Float. It's right here, right behind us, over here on Green Bay in Washington, a fantastic retail company that's employing about a dozen people.
You have one minute.
Books of Life, that's located over on Ridge and Lake, another retail store that supports the ordinance. Both of those owners have provided letters. Dan Johnson, who also serves on the library board, he submitted a letter, which I understand is included in the materials. He owns Progressive Public Affairs. Jen Ehrenberg, who's lived here for over thirty years and has owned parties, events, and more, and employs at least thirty people over the course of the year. Patricia Drezen, who owns Abbey Berg, Craniosocial Therapy.
Thirty seconds.
And additionally, Leslie Wirick, who's lived here for seventeen years and has written the board and has stated that these numbers are not making sense. The business owners in our community support this ordinance and I, I feel very bullied by what's going on and for me, it's almost become uncomfortable. I live, breathe, and eat small business. When I have the decision, I shop small business. I shop local. I had the privilege of meeting with Senta over at Rock House Coffee, which is one of my favorite places to go to. And we talked about what it looks like to support small business and I truly believe that by opting into this ordinance, we are supporting small business. And I, I really hope that all of you join me in supporting our community and looking side-by-side with the two-thirds of our community that support this and joining the businesses and opting into this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. So we're done with that side. This side, can I see again who'd like to speak? All right. So let's just take the first three rows here. That's the first five people.
Hi. Thank you very much. My name is Monica Rodriguez. I'm a Willmet resident. I've been here for thirteen years. I'll keep my comments very brief. My background is a PhD in cultural anthropology and one of the things that I like the best about cultural anthropology is that it reminds us that we can build community in whichever way we want and that there's nothing normative about the way we organize our societies, that we can look around and decide for ourselves how we'd like to organize that. we can look around and decide for ourselves how we'd like to organize that. I, I would like to urge you all to think about the ways in which your constituents have articulated their desire to create community here by supporting the opt-in. I support opt-in, and I would be very happy to, to see you all support that. I appreciate the process that you have engaged in, the thoughtful deliberations, but at the end of the day, I think the preponderance of the data do reflect a desire to opt-in, and that your, that our community here is telling you, this is the, this is the way we would like to construct our community and be here in Willmett. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, sir.
Hi. My name's Vic Doucet. I live at 108 Longdale, and I'm here to support the opting back in we were in originally. But I have a letter here I have liked to read from a business owner, and it's from Julie Chenavert, owner of Books of Life, that was mentioned earlier by another speaker. And she wrote this letter, and I'll read it into the record. It stated, June 8, 2018, "Dear Willmett Trustees, my name is Julie Chenavert, and I own Books of Life, a retail store located at 805 Ridge Road here in Willmett. I am writing today because I support the opt-in. I support raising minimum wage and paid sick leave. My business, Books of Life, has been a successful and popular component of the business district at Ridge and Lake Avenue for three years. I am disappointed to learn that other businesses are not supporting our community by fighting the opt-in. As a member of this community and business owner, I urge you to do what is right for business, workers, and public health for opting in. I gladly and proudly support the ordinance, and as a retail business owner, know we can thrive paying the higher wages the ordinance supports. I urge you to opt-in. Thank you, Julie Chenavert." On my own case, I just have a rhetorical question, and that is, it seems that our economy is doing so well. The stock market is rocketing. Unemployment is down very low. If we wouldn't opt in now, when would we? If we don't opt in when the economy is doing well, when would we, if ever? And I'm very uneasy that our wealth and our success is built on the backs of people who are condemned to poverty for, for their whole lives because they can never work their way out of it. They work full-time--
One minute.
--at minimum wage, and they stay at the poverty level. I don't know how, how we can live with ourselves, knowing that, that sacrifice requires, or justice requires sacrifice. And I think we have, we can bend. We don't have to break. We can bend and, and help these people who, who ask for our help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Len, and I'm a local pastor, serving First Presbyterian Church here in the village. JK. My name is actually Reverend CJ Hawking. I'm the executive director of Rise Chicago, and I'm reading this letter on behalf of Pastor Len. I've only been here in Willmett for over a year, but have already come to love and appreciate our community a great deal. We are blessed beyond measure to live in Willmett, a neighborhood with tremendous wealth and resources. In 2015, the annual median household income in the village was $132,110. In contrast, as we have heard, minimum wage earners make $17,000 a year. While it is financially impossible for most of these workers to live in our community, they still work in local businesses and deserve to be valued and supported by all of us. I challenge the village board to courageously opt back into the Cook County minimum wage and paid sick days changes. It may not be economically advantageous, but it will be morally advantageous. We would be setting a compelling example on the North Shore. Mother Teresa once said that the problem with the world is that we've forgotten that we belong to one another. I think she was right. Our call is to see our relationship with all of God's children, including those struggling to get by, working two jobs just to pay rent and put food on the table. Pastor Jeff further says, "Study after study has demonstrated that raising wages is the most effective way to end hunger and reduce poverty." As a Christian pastor, I could cite many passages from the Bible and our church tradition that call on us to support the least of these, from the prophet Isaiah to the teachings of Jesus and so on, but I'll refrain from doing so for the sake of brevity and just share with you that I think we are ultimately all judged by how we treat not the best and the brightest among us, but especially the most vulnerable. We can do it. We can afford it. It's the right thing to do. Of course, opting back into the Cook County changes, opting back into the Cook County ordinances will not usher in utopia, but it will help a little bit. It will put more money in the pockets of those who need it the most.
Time's expired.
Let us continue to work and pray for a better world, step by step and day by day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Sheri Medwin, 25-year resident of Park Avenue in Willmett. And the previous speakers covered much of what I was going to say, so I will add on briefly. Calling your attention to income inequality in the state of Illinois and specifically in the village of Willmett. According to a recent study by the Illinois Economic Policy Institute, economic inequality in Illinois has increased to levels not seen in decades. The study confirms what most of us who live here know, that a state once considered fairly wealthy, and one in which a huge share of the population was considered middle-class, has been reversing its course for decades now. And if we don't opt in for the minimum wage hike, our village will be exacerbating that gap. As this young lady before me pointed out, the median income of Willmett residents hovers around $140,000 a year. The minimum wage earner, those thousand-plus minimum wage earners in Willmett are earning $17,000 a year. We residents who earn a decent income by teaching, by doctoring, by owning businesses are making eight times as much money as our minimum wage workers. Outside of Dante's circles of hell, what is right about that picture? I would urge you to say to all of the small business owners, and my father was a small business owner with whom I grew up, to say to all of those who worry about losing business, to share with them what FDR said, "No business which depends for its existence on paying less than living wages to its workers has any right to continue in this country or in this county." Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Hi. My name's Tom Sparks, 931 Westerfield. I'm a 31-year resident of New Trier Township, 26 years in Glencoe, and five now down here in Willmett. I'm here to ask you to continue to opt out. I have to admit, I'm a little intimidated. I feel like a heathen at a, at a, a local, anyway, at a local church service. This group is very well organized and obviously very well funded. They are very active. You're making my point, but--
Sir, yeah.
--I'm really here to tell you a different perspective. I agree with their goal. I particularly agree with--
Sir.
--the gentleman that, that said we should not condemn these folks to a life of poverty and minimum wage. I have a couple of degrees in engineering, which I threw away to go down and trade at the Chicago Board of Trade. And while I was down there, we had Mikhail Gorbachev come and speak to us, and he was riveting. And one thing he said has always stayed with me. He said the Soviet Union would have collapsed decades before had it not had the West prices to use internally. And that followed with some further discussions with some friends. I realized that the price signal is the most important signal that we have. It is the sine qua non of any functioning market or economy or society. The price signal is something we all hate, right? It's the price you pay. But in reality, it's the most important data point that we can have, and a wage is a price signal. And it's not just a price signal for the business owners, which seem to be the focus of people here tonight. It's also a data point for employees. You are worth X. If you want to be worth more--
One minute.
--you need to improve yourself. You need to change what you're doing. Philip K. Howard made that in his point in his book, The Death of Common Sense, years ago, that there's a reciprocity. What I would love to see, but the minimum wage being such a ham-fisted and frankly archaic law truncates in this day and age is a reciprocity where, in exchange for a higher wage, you ask people to, to better themselves. If you've dropped out of high school, go back and get your GED, but I kind of digress.
You have 30 seconds.
My point is that when you pay somebody $8 an hour, and that's the market wage, you're telling them what they're worth, and you're telling them if you want them to be better, they've got to go change, they've got to get skills, they've got to do something. When you take that rage wage and you artificially inflate it to $12 or $15, and you tell somebody that they're worth that, you have taken away their incentive to change and to better themselves, and you have helped to condemn them to a life--
Time's expired.
--of, how long?
I said your time's expired. If you could wind up, please.
I'm sorry. I'm almost done. You're helping to condemn them to a life of low or no-skill labor. So I would ask you to opt out of the minimum wage, not for businesses, not for consumers, but for the employees themselves. I disagree, I agree with the, the goal of these folks. I just disagree with, with how they want to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so who in the yellow chairs that would like to speak hasn't spoken? Just the yellow chairs, not the back. Two, four, six of you? Come on up. I'm trying to limit it to five or six so that people aren't, you know, in queue for too long. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Carlee Daniels. I'm a rabbi at Congregation Sukkot Shalom down the road, and I am here to express my support for the Cook County Minimum Wage and Paid Leave Ordinance. I believe that Willmett Village should opt into this ordinance, and I stand with my colleagues and fellow clergy members, who believe it's essential to our faith traditions to support this ordinance. A Jewish sage taught that we have an obligation not only to feed the hungry, but also to help those in need become self-sufficient. A raise in minimum wage and new paid time off benefits will help some of the most vulnerable in our community to earn a living wage and be able to support their families. I urge you to opt in to the Cook County Minimum Wage Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
I'm Gina Kennedy. I'm a 32-year resident of the best village within the village, Kennelworth Gardens. It is, too. I know that many Willmett business owners are deeply and sincerely concerned that the adoption of the ordinances will harm their businesses and possibly drive them out of business entirely. And I also know that some of you may be sharing their concerns and fear, particularly as it affects the village and a loss of sales tax revenue. I believe these fears, although genuinely held, are unfounded. The working group convened by the board worked hard to compile the best available data and other material relevant to the board's decision. They did a phenomenally good job. The report includes several academic studies of the effect of minimum wage increases on employment and on businesses employing them. In narrowing down an overwhelming amount of material on the subject, the group chose the most reputable studies and gave preference to peer-reviewed papers funded by non-ideological sources. There are some differences of opinion among them, but these differences are small. Wolfson and Bellman's peer-reviewed meta-analysis of over a dozen different studies conducted in 15 years, which is in your packet, shows a very strong consensus among researchers that increases in the minimum wage costs only a miniscule loss of jobs or no job losses at all. If businesses employing low-wage workers were forced to close due to increased labor costs, job losses would follow, but there is no reliable evidence that that occurs. Unfortunately, a June 2017 University of Washington paper has stoked these fears among some businesses. The study is a clear outlier, but more importantly, it is a working paper, a work in progress, not a finished paper. This weekend, I exchanged emails with the study's lead author. He told me that the June 2017 paper has been revised twice since its original publication.
You have one minute.
The third version is currently undergoing peer review, and there will likely be further revisions of this paper as a result of the process. He stated that based on the work his group has done since that study was published, they now believe that increases in the minimum wage in Seattle actually provided expanded opportunities for experienced workers, even if it did result in a slight decrease in the inexperienced worker hiring. We all need to take that Washington study--
30 seconds.
--with a huge grain of salt. I empathize with those in the business community who are fearful of, for their future, but Imperial Motors, Crate &amp; Barrel, Borders, and Carson's did not close because we were going to raise the minimum wage. The disgraceful and deliberate hollowing out of Plaza de Lago did not occur because of minimum wage changes, and the inability to rent retail space on the new building on Green Bay Road has nothing to do with that either. There are--
Time's expired.
--real problems that urgently need to be addressed in Willmett to make its business community thrive, but opposing an overdue increase in the minimum wage is a distraction and doesn't solve any of the real problems. The board's decision should be based on evidence of what happens in the real world, not on unfounded fear. I urge you to be consistent with the, the voice of the significant majority of Willmett residents and adopt the Cook County ordinances. Let's move on and tackle the real problems facing the village's businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Judy Goody. I live on Prairie Avenue, and I've lived in Willmett for 44 years. I have two points to make. One is that we need to adopt and opt into--
Ma'am, would you speak, speak closer to the microphone? I'm pretty sure nobody can hear you in the back of the room.
How's this?
That's better.
Okay.
Thank you.
One is that we need to opt in to the county ordinances, both on minimum wage and on sick leave, because it's a moral imperative. A person who comes to work in our community to help an employer provide goods and services to our residents, who are rightly proud of our property values, should be paid enough to provide a living for his family, for his or her family. And most Willmett residents agree with me. I agree with everything that's been said by all the people this evening in support of adopting, opting in to the minimum wage and sick leave ordinances, many of whom have said it much more eloquently than I have. And thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Jeff Axelrod. We all know what we're supposed to do when we witness bullying. When you see something, say something. When bullies deflect attention on them with false outside attacks, this is called gaslighting. We've all, we've become all too familiar with this tactic nationally and now locally. It's not our job to worry about the bully's hurt feelings about being confronted, and we sure do have a lot of hurt feelings, and we have a lot of bullying. It's coming from our Chamber of Commerce, from professional right-wing writers, and from alt-right groups in Willmett. When people work to stop even the most modest attempts to protect our most vulnerable from exploitation in our village, which was recently named as one of the 100 wealthiest in America, we're going to call you out on it, and I'm, I'm sorry if it feels bad. Maybe their conscience is telling them something. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Carol Most Condras from 1616--
I'm Carol Moskandreas from 1616 Sheridan Road. In passing the opt-out ordinance last year, the board knew that it was denying workers in Wilmeth the employment protections granted by the Cook County ordinances. A year later, we are clearer, we can be clearer about the consequences of opting out, thanks in large part to the working group report, which was excellent. We can better see the decision's costs. Now we know for sure the opt-out ordinance disadvantages workers in Wilmeth in comparison to those in dozens of other suburbs, including Skokie, Evanston, Wilmeth, Kennelworth and Glencoe. The first year's cost of the opting out to a full-time minimum wage worker in Wilmeth is $3,640 in lost wages, wages she would have received working in, say, Evanston. And we know from the working group's report that probably over 1,000 employees in Wilmeth work for minimum wage, and 70, 80% of them are working to support a family. These are the folks paying these opt-out costs in lost wages. The working group report also tells us that the opt-out costs regarding paid sick leave, data from the employer survey show that they do not provide sick leave to 1/4 of their full-time employees and 3/4 of their part-time employees. All of these workers would have had some sick leave if they worked in, say, Wilmeth. Thousands of hours of sick leave are lost to Wilmeth workers as a cost of the opt-out. But financial costs are not the only ones. There are human costs. To illustrate, I offer two true stories arising from my experiences directing homeless shelter programs. A staff person approached me with bad news. A mother in our family shelter was very distressed. She was working and doing well. However, this morning, her daughter had spiked a fever. She wanted to stay and care for her daughter, but had no sick leave.
You have one minute.
She feared she would lose her dearly one job by not going to work. She felt trapped in a no-win situation, and sensed she was losing all she had achieved. Her sense of entrapment is a cost of having no sick leave. A friend told me about an incident that still haunted her from years ago when she supported her family on a low-paying job. At breakfast, her son knocked over the milk. It cascaded onto the table and the floor. She went into a rage. Suddenly, she caused her kids terror-stricken faces. This was not the mother she knew. They knew. She realized, her off-the-charts reaction was because she knew she could not buy more milk until the next payday, days away. She began to sob. Crying over spilt milk is a cost of having a very low-paying job. These true stories show the human costs, how low wages and lack of sick leave pinch people's lives, shaping not just the current situation, but also their view of the world what is possible. By voting to repeal and opt in, you can have an immediate positive effect on the lives of over 1,000 workers in our community. Opting in won't make them rich, but it will allow them to stay home with their sick kid without losing their job. It will allow them to buy an extra carton of milk. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you guys for listening for so long. I know it's hard to be active listeners to all these voices. I'm Dr. Sherl Axelrod. I know we've spoken before, an OB-GYN and business owner in the area. You know from speaking previously that I am in favor of a higher minimum wage and paid sick leave. I have two points tonight. First, to correct some of the misinformation spread at previous meetings that was sort of strewn about in what I found a very Trumpian manner, no matter how many times these lies are repeated, there's never been a boycott. There has never been bullying of businesses who oppose minimum wage and paid sick leave. A year ago, when the board first moved to consider an opt-out, an effort was made to identify businesses voluntarily who paid workers fairly and offered paid sick leave in order to place them on an honor roll, which is very different from a boycott. Facts matter. No one has been bullied for wanting to opt out. But what I expect is happening is that the individuals who have expressed this sense of persecution are actually responding to their own voice of conscience, shaming themselves for supporting, or their conscience, whatever. My words don't work now. So, secondly, this board opted out last year and commissioned a working group and its report on the thought that Wilmeth was unique, and they wanted to study these issues in the context of our village. You did this even in the face of 3/4 of Wilmeth supporting the prior referendums. You'll forgive my initial skepticism, that the board was truly looking perhaps just for an excuse to solidify their opt-out position. After all, how unique could our economics be? So, now that the working group report has been delivered, and it clearly asserts peer-reviewed, rigorous studies that defend higher minimum wages and paid sick leave, we've debunked these arguments that these things would harm communities. We've debunked it that they would close businesses, even where bordering communities would pay less. A statistically significant and rigorous survey was clear, the vast majority of Wilmeth residents support opting in. What remains to be seen is if the board will act as elected representatives of the people of Wilmeth, or if they will act instead as if they were elected by the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so I think we're down to just the people on the blue chairs in the back. Anybody else who'd like to speak in the back, the blue chairs in the back? Three people, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Nicolai. I live at 324 Lyndon. I've been in Wilmeth for five years. And I am in favor of opting in. When I saw the ballots and I saw the questions, I did not think of what the studies were. I just thought that it was morally the correct thing to do, to provide sick leave and also to raise the minimum wage. I think in the meantime, there's been a lot of division and conflict in the community because of this issue. And I took heart when I felt guided by John Jacoby's, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, his name, article in the Wilmeth Beacon. That article was "What Happens After Memorial Day." And in that article, he speaks of local war heroes who defended our country's highest values. He poses the question, would America's fallen heroes look at our actions and think we'd done our part in promoting freedom, equality, justice, compassion, and all of the other values that sent us to war? I think that's what exactly those moral standards were, those that the Wilmeth voters in majority voted when they voted for those sick leave and the minimum wage raise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Eleanor Lipinski. I live at 1243 Gregory, and I've lived in Wilmeth for 16 years now. I wanted to address a certain point or argument that I've been hearing about, that government should not intervene into decisions of businesses, and that businesses know what to do what's best. And I think it's important to note that there are many circumstances where government does intervene with businesses. For instance, restaurants we frequent, we require them to keep clean kitchens. We don't want to go to a restaurant that has a dirty kitchen, so we send inspectors to inspect them. And that's okay when it's okay to intervene then. It's okay to intervene if we want you to get rid of your trash in a certain way. It's okay to intervene if we have certain electrical grade that we want you to do your work. You know, we send out inspectors to make sure that you're doing it. We don't just trust that businesses are doing these things on their own. We have leaf blower requirements where they can't use leaf blowers for certain months of the year because of noise pollution. All these things, all these decisions are made by local, are guided by local ordinances, and they affect the way businesses operate. They affect their bottom line, and they affect their, how they, their efficiency. But yet, when it comes to intervening, we hesitate when it comes to intervening to protect the lowest-earning workers in our community by offering them a living wage. This seems indicative to me of some political ideology, and that's not what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss the minimum wage, which is the law. It's the law in the United States. It's the law in Illinois. It's the law in Cook County. It's the law in Wilmeth. Your decision is whether $8.25 is the right hourly amount to pay. A raise, $8.25, which has not been raised in eight years, which is essentially a pay cut. Our economy's been growing, the stock market's been growing, but the economic disparity in our country has been growing as well. A little personal perspective, I'm self-employed. I work with small, local businesses, nonprofit businesses in Wilmeth, and I do all their business. So I do their payroll, their sick leave contracts, things like that. And I can tell you that the businesses that I work with, they employ between 5 and 25 employees, and they all pay well above the minimum wage, and they all offer sick leave that exceeds what the county ordinance is requiring. In addition, they offer raises each year. And in order to affect those raises, they sometimes have to increase their fees to their customers, and they are not closing their doors. So we live in a community with 27,000 people. The median household income here is $138,000. Our median home value is $636,000. We're surrounded by communities that support this ordinance and have opted in.
Time's expired.
And I would hope that the board will review this report that was put together and consider the support of the community, and take the small step to protect these workers in our community. Opt in, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Watt. You're the last one of the night.
Hopefully, I'll have something interesting to say.
Call you the cleanup hitter tonight, okay?
That's right, although the Cubs are down.
I haven't been checking. I turned my phone off, so...
I have. Lolly Watt, Chilton Lane. I've lived here for 24 years. There are two reasons to opt in. One is based on facts, and the other is based on the kind of people we are. The fact is, we had someone from the Restaurant Association talk tonight about how they support an increase in minimum wage to $11 for the state. Well, 825 in Cairo, Illinois is very different from 825 in Wilmeth, Illinois. And saying they support $11 in Cairo is different from saying $11 here. We all know that. And let's not kid ourselves. We also know, because we believe in facts, that restaurants are not required to pay tipped employees minimum wage. Many of them do. My children worked for a local restaurant here in Wilmeth, who paid their tipped employees, which they both were, minimum wage, and in return, they got their eternal gratitude. These two no longer work in the restaurant industry, but they continue to consider this restaurant and the people who own it family. So let's not kid ourselves that restaurants will go out of business if this happens and that happens. None of us make decisions about where to buy our coffee or where to buy our sandwich based on 50 cents one way or the other. The other reason is morality. I'm sure all of you, all of us, everybody sitting here believes that we are charitable people, we do the right thing, we like to give to people, we like to give to causes, we volunteer. You are all volunteers. But we also know that every Thanksgiving and every Christmas and every holiday, all the soup kitchens are lined up with people there to serve and there to help, but they're really there to serve and help themselves, because the soup kitchens don't need 500 people at Christmas and Thanksgiving. They need 10 people every day of the year.
You have one minute.
So the people who are really there for the people who need help are the people who are volunteering on a random Monday rather than at Thanksgiving and Christmas. You have an opportunity to do something that can actually seriously impact the lives of young children, their nutrition, the tension level of their parents. You can do the right thing, and you can do it for the right reasons with a clean conscience based on facts. Please consider the implications of your vote and vote to opt in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watt. Okay, Finance Committee, we're back to Trustee Sullivan.
Those were our last two. All the other nine items were approved on consent.
Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items were on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Wolfe.
All items on consent.
Now I have to look here. Public Safety Committee had two items that were on consent. Judiciary Committee had one item that was on consent. There are no reports from our special committees. There's no additional new business to discuss. Item 8 is pending matters referred to standing committees. There's no actions to take with regards to pending matters referred to standing committees. I deferred item 2, which was public comment. So I will say now that during public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. And that will take us to item 9, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Throw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 9:18 PM.